Well, I might as well see if they're winning anyway.
Yeah.
The game last night.
Yes.
Have they stirred, did they stir flour?
Was it?
Let's say.
I didn't watch anything.
We won one of the nothing.
Okay, we're ready to go here.
Where you need the turn here?
Yeah, you can turn them back. You'll be all right. You'll be all right. I wouldn't. What's that?
Turn my phone off. Remember when Danny's phone used to?
All the time, every, every day. Every meeting it would ring.
I thought about him the other day.
Just whatever you get, you get, that's all.
What a.
He, he just, he, he, how would you say, a spirited man or?
Yeah.
You know, but his heart was good, you know, his heart was.
In the right place, yeah. Camp, camp here.
He did love this community, you can't say he didn't love the village.
The one I took it all the way down this year.
He worked hard.
Cause they're older plants. They're, they're twenty years old.
It really was. Okay.
So the one I.
Everybody ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So I will get nothing out of that.
Fred, Diane, Jennifer?
Yep.
Fine, okay. I guess we'll make that motion today too.
For Ray?
Yeah. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Village of Walton Hills, Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven oh one P. M. Next item is roll call, please.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
And Councilman Whedon?
I'd like to ask for a motion. He did contact me through an email saying there's a chance he won't be here, he's under the weather. And if I could ask Council to excuse, make a motion to excuse it tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Council President Raymond Whedon from the meeting tonight. He's under the weather and I'd like to make the motion to excuse him.
Second?
Second by Councilman Nielsen. Board on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay. All Council except for Councilman Whedon not here. Is, they are here tonight except for Mr. Whedon. We do have our fiscal officer, Nicole South, our fiscal clerk, Melissa Sandrick, our police chief, Dave Kvitikowski, and our laundry director, John Montello here. Hope you feel better, Ray. I've seen there's three people watching, so he could be watching our meeting tonight too. Next order of business is pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Any comments related to the agenda items? Could be from Council, could be from any residents that are here or any residents that are watching a live stream. Like to welcome anybody that's watching a live stream, whether residents or non-residents. Unless you can ask questions as we go through the agenda too. Okay. So we have item five, which is finance discussion. Nikki, you wanna touch base? Kinda give us an update there?
Sure. So I distributed the monthly financials for the month of March. In summary, Rita collections increased twenty-one point nine seven percent for the year versus last year. The village received ten thousand one hundred and ninety dollars in interest income for March. March revenues exceeded expenditures by four hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and two dollars and sixty-two cents. And year-to-date expenditures exceeded revenues by three hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. I did distribute an additional, the budget this year versus the budget last year, two thousand and twenty-five versus two thousand and twenty-four, budget and actual. I know, Jennifer, you had requested something similar, so I sort of put this together just to see if this was, if this was what you were looking for?
Yes.
In addition to the other financial statements, I don't, there wasn't anything else extraordinary or unusual this month. Basic village expenditures, revenues were up, expenses were up a bit. Transfers this year versus last year were down due to the fact that we moved the service department wages from the two thousand and eleven to the general fund. And at that point, I would open up for any questions or comments.
Nikki, one question. The two thousand and twenty-four actual on this other general fund sheet, is, was that year-to-date also?
Yes, okay. As with these two, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to ask for any suggestions from Council if they'd like to see things more condensed. It's getting to be a pretty big packet here to go through. So if you could, think about it in any time during the week, if you could give me some suggestions or if you're happy with what you're seeing, we can kinda work together for, with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, for Nicole, could you expound just a little bit generalities for the year-to-date expenditures exceeding revenues by the three hundred and eighteen thousand? Expected? The types of payments that were made, things like that?
I think basically it's just that the expenditures, a lot of it had to do with, like I said, the transfers this year versus last year.
Okay.
So that would be a majority of it. Other than that, there weren't any real large, real large items. As well as moving the service department wages into the general fund, that made a difference versus last year. So it was basically those bigger items.
Okay, thank you.
Nikki, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, that's fine.
Nikki, I just looking at the, if I'm looking at this right, the TIF, TIF money?
Yes.
Were those our first big payments of the three one?
Uh, yes, they are.
Those are the first, okay.
Where, where do we have, one of, one of one?
Yeah, one of one.
There's one cash summary by fund for, for March and there is also a cash summary by fund for January through March.
Where, Mr. Mayor?
They are back to back.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was looking because
In the beginning.
This is our first, I was assuming it was our first from the, from Draw East, Florida Innovation East, and also NPK. Was looking at that, so that was the, was that the first from NPK?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we, did we have, was that last year our first payment? No, it was this year.
We did have a fund balance.
We have a little bit last year.
Small, a small.
We have a fund balance on there.
This was our first.
Yes, so that would be it. We did have a small amount last year.
Thank you.
So Nikki, why don't you go through that line a little bit? Cause it also helps with residents that are here and residents that may be watching or view the tape later. So go ahead, you wanna go through that?
The draw?
One forty-three, yeah.
Those actually are payments we are receiving. They are distributed through our property taxes and those were in relation to the buildings on the corner.
Okay, and so the Draw TIF, TIF, our total funding adjustments is fifty-nine thousand dollars. I just kinda wanted you to go through the amounts so that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So, yes, the total amount received for the Draw TIF was fifty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-five and for the NPK TIF was twenty-one thousand seven fifteen fifty-four.
That's eighty-one thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, Nikki, these are just our first.
One quarter.
First quarter payments. We will be receiving more this year, so.
We should receive them twice a year.
Ah, okay.
What I believe, yep.
So can almost plan a double in that. And that doesn't include, I don't, does that include anything from the Cardinal Health Building yet?
No.
I didn't, I didn't believe so. That's just, just the first building.
Or, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Which brings up a question from Councilman Nielsen. Are, are all the different buildings going to be line item like you have here? Like, for example, the Cardinal Health Building, will that be a separate line item?
Only the bill, only the TIF items would be a separate.
Okay.
Any sort of income tax revenue would then be, go into the general fund.
Okay.
But I, I think what Brian's at, so how we have that line and we have Draw TIF, Florida Innovation Center East, that will include any building that goes on that site. That will be the total TIF money we get from that site.
Correct.
I think that's what you're asking, right?
That's what I was asking, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It wouldn't, yeah, wouldn't be separated.
It won't be separated.
It wouldn't be separated off per building, it's just the total project.
Correct, the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Nicole, what are the limitations of how we can use that TIF money?
I, from what I understand and Matt, we would probably want explanation from Mr. Stazinski is for, for infrastructure within the certain vicinity of those buildings. But I would refer to him for specific projects.
Which we'll all have to pretty soon, potentially we gotta spend it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just discussing the TIF with Mr. Jordan, with Tom Jordan. We're, it's, it's pretty wide open.
Cause we're so small.
Cause we're a small community and it's, and it, we're, it really includes most everything in the village.
Definitely.
Yeah, we're, and, and again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, well, good for all of us. We all work hard to get that development. We're still working hard to get that next building there and also some tax share to the schools, which you guys know about, we talked about. And we'll continue to do that. And so we got some more economic development that we talked about in executive session. We'll see how that goes. That's a little more long-term. I think that's gonna benefit the village well in years to come too, so we're definitely going in the right direction. Nikki, I know you, you mentioned the Council, you and Melissa. If we wanted to see something different or, or smaller, did you guys have any suggestions? Were you looking for something? I know this is a lot, I mean, would you rather, I mean, you know what I'm saying? If, if, don't be afraid to say, hey, you know, we think you, this might be easier to digest or, or easier to look at, you know, kind of similar to what Jennifer asked for and you put the two comparisons together. But if you have that suggestion, think, you know, maybe this is with quarter, quarterly or semi-annual, but you could give us, if you think there's something that we'd be able to see. And that's up to you. I just know you were asking us, but at the same time, you know, maybe you were trying to get this somewhere. I was, this is my head, I thought maybe you're trying to get, you know, steer us in a direction of an idea you two have. And if you do, we value that, you know?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just, it's a lot of paperwork to look at. I know that some of the, the reports, the first one, the cash flow year over year, that's a nice report to look at, I think, every month. As far as the revenue and the expenditure status, I don't know what you would like to see, if, if it's good enough to see the totals of just like the police department, the service department, or if you need to see line by line every month. And it's up to you. This report is a fairly easy one to print out. It's just a lot of, a lot to look at. So I don't know if you would like it condensed more or if you're happy the way it is. But like I said, it's easy enough to print these ones out. The year-over-year is a little bit, you know, versus twenty-four versus twenty-five is a, took a bit more time because it doesn't come right out of the system and there's a higher probability of error on my part if I type something in wrong or delete a line that, so it's a little bit more work making sure everything matches up. But that might be something that we do quarterly, year-to-date.
Yeah, I like the comparing to other years so we can see, you know, if we're consistently moving up in a certain line item, you know, then we know and it's easier, I think, to predict when we're budgeting. You know, or when you're doing the budget and stuff. So that, that's why I like that, to see where we are compared to where we have been in the past.
Right. This one too, the first one, the cash flow year over year, that shows you all of that. It just doesn't show you the budget amount and I know it's nice to see where we're at in our budget. But again, that can be condensed into just maybe not every single line item if that's sufficient. But I'm not sure exactly how you wanna see everything.
Well, I know, I definitely appreciate all these reports and having such a good breakdown because of our deficit that we're running, you know, it really, we can watch it so much better. And I know it is a lot on you every single month to do this for us, you know, but I'm sure if, once we look this over a little more thorough, if there is something, definitely we will try and do that.
Yeah, and like, like I said, the, these ones here that I'm including are not difficult to run. They come right out of the system. I don't have to make any adjustments. So the ones that are attached to the packet, it's just thick, so I just didn't know if you wanted something a little more.
It's a lot of paper, yes.
Okay, well, we'll see what everybody thinks and, and go from there. Don't be afraid to present us with some, if you think there's something better. I know I myself and Council and everybody appreciates it if you think there's something that would be easier to read or just, you know, whatever you think, don't be afraid to present it. Cause you have it, we can always have both or maybe say, hey, we like that one better or whatever.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon commented, thank you very much for the finance reports and explanation. You're welcome.
Hope you're feeling better, Ray.
Nikki, I do have one question on this, on one thousand dash five nine zero dash forty-one oh four.
Is that under revenue? Yeah. Forty-one oh four?
Mm-hmm. How is that one, twenty-two? Twenty-two thousand?
Those would be deposits, plan and review deposits?
So is that like?
Any kind of construction projects that might be going on if they had put a deposit, that's where that would go?
Okay.
Any fees for that?
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, related to the budget, but not exactly, this just came to mind when I was looking at the traffic cameras and I know we increased the fines on the traffic cameras. Do we know when the last time the court fines were looked at?
Yeah, we looked at those.
Yeah, we just increased the court fines.
Yeah, was that the same time?
For the court costs.
The court costs.
And I thought the fines we did too.
I didn't think we did, that's why, that's why I was asking.
For the cameras. Just for the cameras.
Mr. Mayor, did they dictate it by the Ohio Vice Code? You can't just up the fines, but it has to be, we're pretty much at the max. We, we're pretty much at the max, you know, we are at the max with the everyone, you know, we have to mirror the Ohio Vice Code. There may be some speeding tickets that we could raise, but with the cameras, I'm not sure you guys wanna do that, but whatever, that's up to you, but. Well, I don't think you were referring to the camera.
No, we did the cameras, yeah, that's why I was just, yeah.
The other court, our mayor's court.
I was just wondering since I was looking at traffic cameras here.
Yeah. Right. Well, we can look into that, find out what we can do and what we can't do.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know Mr. Montello's got a lot on his plate, seems to be more and more every week. But we had talked also about being more aggressive, about going after people who don't pay those fines. There is a portion of the people who don't pay and it is a, it's a civil fine. But we have every right to go after those people also. And I just don't want people to think that they can just not pay and get away with it. So I'd like to, I'd like to see us get a little more aggressive. I don't know if contacting the, that company that, does the cameras have any information for us? If we can contract with somebody to go after unpaid tickets or not.
And does it go on Garfield Stockit for like their traffic? The speed cameras don't, that's only if you have a ticket?
Yes, but, Mr. Mayor? Go ahead. Actually, the, there's been a change in the law now that you can't even, you can't block someone's license or put out a warrant for non-payment, only for not showing up for court. So actually, we have to dismiss all of our warrant blocks. I don't know if the warrant blocks or the registration blocks, it's, it's some, a new law is going into effect in about a week or two. We're still kinda trying to digest what the ramifications are, but it's gonna make it harder to collect money. Although we, I have talked to Suzanne about going, you know, hiring a collection agency to, to help us with the camera tickets and, and perhaps going through the Ohio Attorney General's office to help us collect fines and costs cause they put a lien on their tax refunds. But we can definitely look at that. And, and we were waiting to hear back from Gabsco again. They, they kinda blow, I mean, we, they contact us and then we don't hear from them for a while. And I haven't heard from them in a while, have you, Chief? I mean, I don't, I haven't heard from Gabsco. The last thing, I think we had a phone conference was late January and here we are, it's April already, so. I, I do have Suzanne following up with them and she does, but I haven't seen a response in the last couple of weeks from the camera company at all, so I'll, I'll make sure she, well, we both follow up with them again in the near future. Cause we were talking about possibly adding some additional cameras, we were talking about the collection aspect and they wanted to negotiate a new contract too, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't know where all that is, but, and I know that they still kinda in, in turmoil, not turmoil, but in discussions with the Garfield Court and they're trying to hammer out some issues they have with the Garfield Court. I'm not sure where that's at. I've asked Justin Casia to keep us in the loop. I think Mayor and I had a conference call or was it Nikki, or all three of us, a month or two ago, but we haven't heard anything in the recent months, so I will follow up on that. Before you know it's gonna be Christmas again. You know, time is flying. So I will follow up with that. It's already eight. Any other questions related to the budget? I mean, the budget, finance, the spreadsheets or anything else you wanna see or anything you'd wanna discuss? Any questions from residents? Any questions from anybody watching?
Nope.
Councilman Whedon and questions? Well, we appreciate the update, Nikki. And Melissa and the comparison. If everybody's good, we could always come back to it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable moving on to item six? Okay. So we have item six, which is I, Police and Dispatch discussion. We put that on there, cause there's a few things. Well, there's more than a few things and some of them might need to go to the Safety and Insurance Committee, but we, I thought it would be a good time to get a few of these items straight. One of them is what we talked about with dispatchers for some benefits. The reason I wanted the chief here and John here and all of us to talk about it is we'd like to get some legislation together to, you know, implement. So, and I'll let the chief just kinda sum it up and David, then I'll let you go through, but I'll let Dave talk about, you know, talk to dispatchers and where they're at. So I think with that, we can kinda get an idea. And I know I, I talked to you like how, John, you can type in whenever you think what we need for legislation besides the TAC and the Assistant TAC. How does, how you become that, does that need to be in there or the amount? Just so we can get some legislation going. Dave, you just kinda, you wanna talk about that? The TAC and the TAC Assistant kinda get us back. I know we talked about it, it's been a while. I think we talked about it in the beginning of the year.
Oh, a microphone?
Yeah, you don't have to stand up, Dave, you just wanna take that to your seat, you got your paperwork in front of you.
So I believe it was beginning of January, I got to speak with all of you in reference to some benefits that I'd like to see the dispatchers start to receive. And what was agreed upon was the assignment of an attack and assistant TAC dispatcher and to increase the hourly wage for the dispatchers when they are in training, when they're training a, a new dispatcher. And also addressed the issue of the holidays. And I went back and I talked to the dispatchers and I sent a letter to the mayor. Walton Hills Police Dispatches and I would like to thank all of you for taking the time and reviewing the dispatch benefits. They'd like to thank you for agreeing to establish the training benefits and the TAC and the Assistant TAC benefits. As far as the holiday benefits, the dispatchers have decided to keep the holidays the way they currently are instead of going with the new proposal.
Okay. So, John, what would we need? Dave, do you have what we, we talked about the hourly? It was what, a dollar, dollar and a half?
I believe it was a dollar for the TAC dispatcher.
Okay.
It was fifty cents for the Assistant TAC. And I don't know, I don't have those figures here, what it was for the dispatcher while they're training.
It's a dollar.
Was it a dollar?
It was a dollar.
And that dollar is just for when that dispatcher is training a new dispatcher.
Okay. So, John, we, we need legislation for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have, so what would you need? So if, if Dave, you can work on that or? And just, I just kinda, the reason I wanna air it a little bit and so we get some of it, you know, we, since we are gonna, we have it for next week, we talked about it. I would ask if Council's comfortable passing under suspension next week. We, we certainly talked about it a lot. How would they, was there, would you need to have, like, who dictates who's gonna be that? Like, is it who's on shift that day is gonna be the trainee? Or are we gonna appoint someone permanently for the TAC and the Assistant? How is that, do you, do we need that? Like, how are they appointed?
All four of my full-time dispatchers are qualified to be a teacher.
Okay.
Okay. So it would depend on who is working that new dispatcher that's coming in their schedule. I'm not looking at hiring full-time dispatcher, I'm looking at part-time dispatcher. I don't know if they have a full-time job and how we'd be able to work around that or anything. So I've got confidence in all of my dispatchers. So I wouldn't have any problems with any of them teaching new dispatcher at all.
So, Mr. Mayor, would that then be trainer as per the chief's recommendation or?
Well, the trainers, okay, so the trainer could be who's ever on that day or, or on that shift or anything, right? So that. Right, so that, it could be any four.
Correct.
What about the TAC and the Assistant TAC?
That I would, I would assign those myself.
Okay.
I'd be also talking with my sergeants to make sure that I was making the right decision. We have talked about it before and we have two dispatchers that we have talked to already and they are interested in those positions.
Okay, so they're going to be appointed to that position by you?
Correct.
And once they're appointed to that position, do we stay in that position?
Until they decide that they don't wanna do it anymore.
Well, if they didn't, but it would be, there's no term. They, they could be assigned at and stay in that position the whole time.
Correct, there would be no term limit.
I'm just trying to figure out how we get to that point. Do we need to, okay, let's say all, all four of them are interested in that position. Do they interview for it? Do they, you know, how, how do you go? You know what I'm saying? That's the thing. You go with the senior most, most qualified? You go with the person, if they're all qualified, do you go with the seniority? That's what I think we might have to iron out in the legislation.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna have to take a look at it.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be a little more complicated.
Okay.
Let's think, I think, but.
Mr. Mayor, does, does 260 have to be revised to include this?
Mr. Mayor, I think, I believe so. Where are they, where are the dispatchers dealt with now, 260?
I believe so.
So, yeah, we'd have to revise.
Like, like in that.
Yes, sir.
Like we do, like this, this site that with, let's say zoning and, and stuff.
Or even just adding those positions because they're not currently listed in 260?
Like, yeah, I know, that's what we gotta look at. How do we, do we make them separate positions or is it part of dispatch? You know, kind of like what we do with like with the zoning.
I'm not sure. I have to look at it. Okay. Just for the public, what, what's a TAC? I don't think these people know what a TAC is.
I can't remember what the terminology is.
What, what does it entail then?
The, the tac and the assistant tac, they're responsible for, every year, leads comes to conduct an audit to make sure that all of our warrants are properly entered, that they're still good warrants. They'll take a look at stolen vehicles, stolen items, to make sure that they were entered into the computer properly. And make sure that items that have been entered for a long time are still actually missing. So they would end up calling the victims and asking them, hey, did you find this? Did you, you know, was this recovered for you? And there have been some times where a vehicle or an item have been recovered because maybe they have found it in the house or maybe another police department found it for them and returned it to them and nobody called us. So things like that have happened before. When leads comes here, they have a list of items that they are going to be looking at. And the tac and the assistant tac officer make sure that all those are prepared properly. We don't have any mistakes. They do double-check all of our warrants that are entered into the computer so that there are no mistakes. Making sure male, female, eye color, hair color, height, all that is correct. Address, social security numbers, dates of birth, all of that is correct when they're checking the warrant. I'm sure I might have missed a couple things.
Maybe, maybe if you have a job description, I don't know, some details.
But we'll look at it. I was trying to look it up right now. Terminal agency coordinator.
That's it. Yep, that's it.
Okay. But I guess my, the point that me and David and Jennifer wanted to bring it up tonight because we talked about it and it kind of stalled it a little bit, just with things going on. So, yeah, I thought now would be the time to get it out there and, and get the ball rolling. Just, we need this legislation. We can review the legislation and then we can go from there. If it's not, if, we gotta make adjustments with it next week. And we could always put on first reading and stuff. But I think we'll, we need to, I think we're all in agreement to move forward with it, correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
All right.
Just real quick, Mayor, did you see that in another community? They have these positions available?
Yes, I, I checked with surrounding communities. And they do have Twinsburg, Macedonia, Garfield. They all have tac and assistant tac officers. And actually, we did have a tac officer, but she resigned. She decided to go someplace else. So we haven't had one for a year and a half, I think.
How's everybody with that? Everybody good with that?
Yes.
So we're gonna keep getting your work done. And Dave, you guys. Okay, and then the other thing was, this is just more just to kind of, we talked about, just to kind of get us together. I don't think we need any legislation for this because we already have it. So right now, we're still down one officer that we budgeted for, correct, Nikki?
Correct.
And Melissa and Dave. So we'd like to advertise for another officer. This would be the position that was part-time that we made full-time. So we, we'd be at twelve, thirteen total, correct?
Correct.
And we're budgeted for it. So we're gonna do that if everybody's comfortable with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have copies of the flyer that I'd like to share.
For the Lexi, from the Lexipol for the?
No, this is what I had Mr. Delano approve and sent you as well.
Yeah, you mean for the?
For the position of the?
Yeah, you could pass that out. I think everybody's good with that. Yeah, Dave put a similar, it's a little, it's a little broader than before it was a lateral. But we didn't have a very good response with that. We were very fortunate we did.
Can, do you have one? I'm gonna see if I can put one in his mailbox. Okay. Okay.
And I have one if you wanna give Mr. Weeden.
Thank you.
Then you wouldn't have to.
Thank you.
You still short one? All right, now you got Mr. Weeden.
All right, I'll put it, I'll put it in his mailbox.
So we did have Mr. Delano look at, yeah, this is a full-time position. Yeah, because we made, we took the part-time and made it full-time. And we budgeted, Melissa and Nikki and Dave, we, and myself, we made sure of that, right?
Yes.
You guys made sure of that.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just so that everybody is aware, down at the bottom, I've got it highlighted that I needed the applications in by April 12th. I will be changing that date. That's why it's highlighted.
But Mr. Delano, we did have Mr. Delano look at it just to make sure because we took the other one, the lateral. They took it and kind of, you know, switched it around a little bit and he was good with it, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Does, the chief, do you have, like, a list of candidates that have already applied that, that you could call in for the position or start from scratch?
From the, the previous applications that I got from the lateral transfer, I did have two applicants, but they were not police officers yet. They just graduated from the academy. And one of those officers, I was told recently, got commissioned through Macedonia Police Department. So technically, I just have one application. So I do plan on sending this out. And hopefully, I will be getting a greater response than I did with the previous one.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're all good with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, do you send them also to the academies?
We have talked about that. I don't know when the academies are in session. One just did finish. I think that was in Kent. I don't know if there's another academy going on right now. But the sergeants and I have discussed that about going to the academies, talking to the commanders and the instructors to see if they're, you know, they would recommend somebody.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, so are we good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so Dave, you're gonna move forward on that. Which kind of leads us into something we just wanna talk about. Maybe, maybe you have it in your committee. I think we would have to have it in. Dave, did you wanna talk about that grant that's out there? Since, kind of what we wanted to do. And if it's, you can always send it to the committee. I just thought, and we got the opportunity here, we're talking about that. Go ahead, Dave.
So I was recently informed, and I believe I sent all of you this letter. I was recently informed by Lexipol. They are the company that does our, review of our policies and procedures. They informed me that sometime in April, and I checked today and it still isn't out there, that there will be a cops grant available for hiring police officer or police officers for your community. So the way that this, and we have hired two of our officers off of this cop grant before. One happened to be Debbie Gasper when she was first put on.
That was just a few years ago.
Yes.
And the other one happened to be Joe Morgan when he was put on. So this grant, from everything that I have been able to read, is gonna be good for three years. Meaning that if you hire an officer from that grant, they will pay up to seventy-five percent of his wages. And that includes his benefits in, in.
The pension rate.
Salary and, and everything else. But what I did find out is there actually is a limit of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's not per year, that's total. So you're looking at a little over forty thousand dollars a year, which is better than nothing. So with that, I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware, you know, when we do hire somebody, right now, we have Patrolman Thirett in our training process. If he was a brand-new officer, he would have to go through sixteen weeks of training. But he has had previous experience with law enforcement. So I'm not expecting that sixteen weeks to, to go to sixteen weeks. But if we're gonna hire somebody right out of the police academy or somebody brand-new, it will be sixteen weeks. In the future, we've got three officers right now that are in the drop program. And that drop program goes for a total of eight years. So there is one officer that will have to retire May of 2026 because that officer will have reached the eighth year. Another officer, they, I believe in May are at the fifth year of that drop program. And at that fifth year, they have the, the right to retire if they want to without having any benefits removed from, from that money that they put in there. Meaning they won't take a penalty for losing any interest.
Chief, is that May of this year or also May of 20?
May of this year.
Okay.
Yeah, May of this year. And I haven't heard that that officer is planning on leaving then. But that officer could decide to leave without having to lose any of the interest in that drop program. Then the third officer, they are, I can't remember what month it is, but they are in their third year. So with an officer leaving, May of 2026, we'll be down another officer. Two other officers not exactly knowing when they are going to retire, but they can retire at any time. I think this is a perfect opportunity to take advantage of this cops grant. Now, in the past, I believe when you're applying for this grant, you just can't say, I want four officers. They will take a look at how many residents, how many households you have here, how big of an area you are covering. And they might just allow us to get two. They might just save one. That's totally up to what they decide to do with the grant. Wouldn't it be a bad idea to ask for two? Okay?
Chief.
But what I really need to know is if Council and the mayor are interested in doing this. Because when I was trying to get a grant with Mr. Spitznagle, and I can't remember what it was for, I think it was for the cameras or something like that. That grant, I could not believe the questions that they were asking. Either Mr. Spitznagle asked some for assistance from another community and they have their own grant team. Not just one person, but they got a whole team. We have nobody. Lexipol is willing to put this grant together for us. And when I checked into it, I think it was last year, maybe the beginning of this year, if they will, if we want them to submit a basic grant and we have to fill in some of that information, it would cost us fifteen hundred dollars. If they go forward and do a full-blown grant for us and all we have to do is sign it and hand it in, they said it would cost thirty-five hundred. I don't think that's too bad.
I, I think what we should do, since the grant hasn't come out yet, this is just my suggestion Jennifer's chair in safety and insurance and council members and members of, I think probably not a bad idea maybe to invite Lexipol to the, to, to a meeting. Because then we'll hopefully know, you know, when it come out and kind of just get a little more information. Because if we are going to, we, if we see that, those retirees, then we probably should apply if we know they're coming. Because we know we're gonna, you know, chances are, we, our goal is to continue to have good safety and services here and good recreation, have good services overall. And I think we all agree in just like making that part-time position full-time, get it back to a full-time department that we would be in favor of hiring another officer if another one retires.
Mr. Mayor?
So we might as well get some funding for it.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, if I could, not only are officers potentially retiring, we've got increased traffic and we are going to have more increased traffic too with the development that's going on at the corner. And there's gonna be an increase and a need for our safety services there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just so that you're all aware, last year around March, I was able to complete a grant for body-worn cameras. It had to be in by March. And just a week ago, found out that we are going to be receiving some of that money. So there is a deadline for us to apply for that grant. And it might be May, it might be June that we have to have this grant completed. But by the time we actually have been awarded the money, we're looking at 2026. And I'm thinking, if it's gonna be like the camera grant and the deadline was March for that one, and I found out March, it just might be April or May of next year that we find out that we get that money for that cops grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, would they retro it for an officer that we would hire in the next month or so, since you're applying?
That, yeah, since we're applying, I don't think so. That would be for a new hire. Meaning that it's somebody that we have.
After the grant's approved.
Yep.
And, and if someone, one of the officers that are in this, the drop program, have they ever completed the eight years and not wanna retire? Is, are they allowed to stay on the force?
They, I believe, are. But what they have to do is they have to retire for, I think it's sixty days. And then they can be rehired.
Okay.
What, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just really quickly, just not to.
Just really quickly, just not to belabor the meeting, but what is exactly the drop program? What does it, what, what's the advantage of going, what, what does it do?
The drop program is a second pension program. So, for example, with me, once I hit my twenty-fifth year, I was able to get into drop. And instead of that money going into the police and fire pension, that money now went into the drop pension program.
Okay.
So the money that was in my police and fire has froze, okay? And the money that is current, currently going into that drop program came from the police and fire pension.
Okay. So does it get a different rate of return or something?
Uh, it, there's a different percentage rate, I believe, yes. Yep. That's sort of why they put that drop-
There's an advantage in doing it.
There's advantage for staying around, right? If you're a younger officer, you can become a police officer at twenty-one years old. And it, you know, you put twenty-five years in, you're forty-six. You know, you might want to stick around a little bit longer. Maybe you get thirty years into your police and fire pension, and then go into drop. And you're still young enough after the eight years.
Wow, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Council President Whedon on another subject asks, "Does the revised announcement meet the criteria to be advertised broadly, including through Indeed?"
Yes. Well, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have not approached HR with this, but I believe that it will meet the criteria for Indeed.
Right.
And if it doesn't, then I will make whatever modifications we have to, to make sure that it does get in there.
So, HR, Ryan will look at that from HR partners. We have John Delano take a look at it, so it is compliant with the productive bargaining agreement. That's where his role is. And then Dave will work with Ryan, and it posted, and I, and we posted last time it didn't need to. So the question is ready yet? It will get posted in multiple advertisements. To get back to this grant, I think, I, I don't know, I, I don't think it would, I think it'd be a good idea maybe to have Lexipol come and kind of explain it, see what our chances are. They, from what me and you understand, they've applied for quite a few of them. They, they understand the program, and probably can explain it pretty good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It might have to be done through a Zoom meeting, because I don't know if the person is here locally.
Right, yeah. We can, we'll make it work. We had our, we had our last meeting, our executive session. We had a few technical difficulties, but we got through it, and we were able to have a productive meeting, so I- I mean, what do you, what do you think?
Right. Well, I think time seems to be of the essence for chief. If you wanted to do it as soon as possible with a safety committee, and then we could bring that, you know, to the council of a whole, if it makes it easier for someone from Lexipol to do that, you know.
The good thing is, you know they're gonna have some time. We have, it hasn't even come out yet. So, you know, from the time they put it out to the time you have to submit your applications, we'll have some time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yep, what, the, when Dave was talking about, when Chief was talking about some of these cities that have full-time staffs just for grants, I know that Mr. Spitznagle and myself, we went through it, and Mr. Spitznagle had, had done a terrific job, but on something like this, I could see where the benefit of having them do it, it would basically be like having a staff. I, I don't know how you-
Some of this stuff is overwhelming.
Yeah, that's-
The types of records that they want, and the information. And being a small village, we just don't have the capacity to even maintain those types of records, that they, the questions that they're answering, that they're asking. So it, it can be quite daunting, depending on what you're going after.
Well, I, I think you missed the point, I think, correct? I think Mr. Nielsen was saying, maybe you give this one a try, you and Dave.
That's, yeah.
Is it be volunteering him, is that how I kind of-
Exactly what I was doing, that, you know, I see him out there playing with the dog.
Well, we, we do know other communities that have grant departments.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and stuff. So honestly, for thirty-five hundred dollars, it's kind of a no-brainer.
That was the point.
And that it's completely done, you know, it's not just something basic.
And they know the answers to their own questions.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, even if we paid thirty-five hundred dollars for every potential one hundred and twenty-five thousand to get-
Not a bad deal.
I would do it ten times over.
Yeah. If you, if it, if it's thirty, you get thirty-eight hundred, and you spend thirty-five, you're three hundred dollars ahead, so, right, exactly. That's a large amount. But to your point, Mr. Nielsen, I know Ryan did a great job writing grants for the village. I know you and Diane and Nikki and everybody's working on, maybe Melissa too, and I don't know, trying to get that one together by the eleventh. I know Ronnie too, from-
Right, Ronnie and-
Marion, they're working on it. I want to get that submitted. That's for a new vehicle, correct?
Yes.
So, that's just another example, I think that's when, you know, we've been very fortunate, like, like the chief wrote about one, and, but certain ones, this is a larger amount, it's gonna take, it's a little, it's a lot more complex, so. Okay, well, with Councilwoman Allen, however you want to work it out-
Yeah.
With the committee, you want to have it inside a COW meeting, or you want to have a separate meeting, whatever you think. But I, I think it's, I appreciate you finding it, and we're waiting for it to take place.
I was just gonna say, Mayor, also Chief, if they were able to have it at six o'clock on a Tuesday, you know, we could come in then too, and get that knocked out before the meeting. Whatever's most convenient.
Yeah, because we could do it, we could do that meeting over in, across the hall, you know, with the, with the TV there, and, and do a Teams meeting, or, you know. That's what we did, what, what was that meeting we did, was it Teams? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one quick comment also from Council President Whedon. He said that the drop is Deferred Retirement Option Plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whedon.
Not to be confused with Droff.
There you go. So, we got three so far, Dave, and then what was, any, what was, I know one of them was to talk a little bit about dispatch as far as other communities. Do you have anything else that we wanted to?
Wanted to bring up what I discussed with you about the Law Enforcement Education Fund that we do not have established.
Right, I know you, Nikki and John had talked about that, correct? Are you and Nikki?
Yes, and we did find a little bit of information out.
All right, yeah, why don't you share that with everybody, and see, is-
If I can speak for Nikki, she did find out, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, that this fund is available, but what we need to do is get it approved through the state auditors first. And I believe before we do that, we've got to get it approved through council, that we would go and do this. This Law Enforcement Education Fund, I just found out about it, and we do not have this fund, but we do collect money from Garfield Court, I think, every month. And it is based off of OVI convictions. And we receive twenty-five dollars from that conviction, and it goes into this Law Enforcement Education Fund. That money can be used towards education for OVIs, meaning if I have to send officers to a specified class to learn how to run the BAC machine, learn how to do the standard field sobriety tests. It is for equipment, if we need any type of supplies or anything like that, as long as it is related to OVIs. It can also be used for the machine that we do not have. Okay, so we-
The one we need to update?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, that's, so, I think it would benefit the, the village. We have been getting that money, but that, the, there was no fund to put that in, that fund in. So it was going right into-
Was it going to the general fund, Nikki?
We met the left, or, or is that a different fund?
No, that's a different fund.
Okay.
It was going in the general, wasn't it?
Yeah, so all that money was going into the general fund. So we're not gonna be able to determine, I don't think, how much money has been put in there, but it would be great if we can start that fund now, and start putting that money away for the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, the only thing I did not, I did not confirm that it needs to be through the auditor's office. I do believe council will have to approve the, creating a new fund. But I'm not sure on the auditor's end, I'd have to confirm that.
But, here, here's my question. Okay, we're, we're receiving the money now, correct?
Yes.
Correct, Nikki?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, what changes are, I mean, if we have the general fund, we can use it for anything.
That would be adding a new fund for the specifically, it would not be the general fund any longer.
Right, and then it would be earmarked for something. So, but to us here, as the governing body, and to council, we think, what difference does it make? You, you know, you see, I mean, we're receiving the money, right? And actually going to the general fund, it gives us more opportunity to spend it outside of what, you know, there's that, it, it would be strictly used for education supplies and equipment that involve, that involve OVIs, where right now, unless we're required, I'd honor to have it in a separate fund. Am I, am I missing something?
I see what you mean.
Yeah, if you're getting the same amount of money. So we, well, let's take a look at it. I know, as the chief in budgeting, he wants all the money in his department, I understand that, but it's, we use it, this way if we wanted to use it for our car, right now, we could, we can use it for a car, police car. I don't know, let's, I, I think we just need to kind of-
I just got it yesterday, what it looks like.
Yeah. But I'm glad you shared it, because that's one of the things Dave brought forward, and we need to look at it, because, and maybe we're required to have that separate.
Yeah.
If we're not doing it, maybe we're supposed to, and so that's... Okay. Dave, did you want to add anything to that?
On the Law Enforcement Education Fund, or the next topic?
No, that topic, that, before we move on.
No, I think that's it.
Hey, we got, you got the, you got the floor, go ahead, Jennifer, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would like to try to update the camera system around the city hall and our village park. We have probably about six cameras out of fifteen, I think it is, fourteen, fifteen, that are currently not working. One of them just went out of commission in a jail cell, and I can't put anybody, if I was gonna hold somebody in that cell, because the camera doesn't work, and we're required to be watching them all the time. We have had a couple incidents within the last month, that one happened in our upper lot here, and we do not have a camera monitoring that up there. If it would have been monitored, we might have been able to rewind, catch it, use it as evidence, maybe see it going on as it was actually happening. We had another incident happen up at TGY Park under the pavilion, and we used to have a camera that, and, and the camera's still mounted there, but it's an old analog camera, and the system that we have up there is digital, so they don't talk to each other. But we had an incident up there in the women's bathroom, and it would have been nice if we were able to record all of that, and we might have even seen it happening, instead of having somebody that was visiting the park call us and observe what was going on.
Chief, just to clarify, it's not a, you don't want to put a camera in the women's bathroom?
No.
It would just observe that area.
Right, it would be, the, the camera right now is on the east end of the pavilion, and it faces west. So you would have the two bathrooms, the vending machine, and the office area. Very important to be watching that stuff. So, the cameras that we have right now, there's four up there, and they're mounted on the outside of the pavilion, and they're checking, you know, the parking lot, the, the ball diamonds, the playground area, and I believe there's one that's facing the entrance. So this would just be an additional camera that would be underneath the pavilion, watching the bathrooms and concessions. The other cameras that we have around the building here, again, they're not digital, they're analog. When we are storing analog video, it does take up more space than digital. Two of the cameras that we have on the side of the building over here have not been functioning for a very long time. One of them goes into the corridor here, the other one is in the back parking lot, facing cruisers. Technically should be watching that stuff. So I did get one proposal right now. I am waiting for a second one, and I contacted that company yesterday, letting them know, "Hey, you were out here," and I was hoping that I'd get the proposal to discuss at the Tuesday's meeting, but he will not have it ready for me until Friday. So I could have a proposal in your mailbox Friday, or, or at least by Monday of next week.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know several years ago now, we talked about a camera being on the parking lot, so that it was a safe space for people selling things online and meeting other individuals. And I was a little dismayed when I found out we don't have a camera in the parking lot at all. And I'm sure Chief could tell you privately about some of the instances that have happened in the parking lot, where having it there, having a camera there, definitely make it safer. This is, I think, a safety issue for all of our residents and our police officers, especially their parking lot too. I think this is definitely something I'm, I think we need to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, is this to replace all the cameras then, a whole new setup, or just broken ones?
With six of them.
You said six, but-
Six of them aren't working right now. So what this proposal is for is a sixteen-channel NVR that would be the, the hard drive that would be storing, or, or the, the video recorder. An eight-terabyte hard drive, HDMI cable, wireless mouse, articulating Walmart, Walmart brackets, fifty-five-inch 4K monitor, fifteen surveillance cameras to include back boxes and monitoring hardware, category six CMP rated cables, connections and support hardware. So that would be replacing all of the cameras. And I did notice that we do have a camera in our evidence room that recently went out. That is also an analog camera, and I need to replace that one, so that number could go to sixteen or seventeen. So that would be replacing all the cam, like I said, you, you can't take, the, the, the four cameras that we have up at TGY right now, those are all digital. The extra one that would be going up there, that would be digital as well, and that could go into the NVR that's up there. And then all the cameras around here, especially the ones inside the building, those would all have to be replaced with digital.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the cameras up at T G Younger, they monitored here in our dispatch center?
Yes.
And how are they, they're not hardwired, are they, they, uh, Wi-Fied to?
They are hardwired into the office up there.
And then that's-
And then that is sent back here.
Okay. And that's how these new cameras would be, like, around Village Hall if we were to get those? Are the, all those wireless cameras?
No, I believe those are all hardwired and they'll go right into dispatch.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? We do have a camera in the building about right there.
Yeah.
Uh, that has been here since Chief Ryans was Detective Ryans, and I believe he put that up there, but it has nev- never worked.
But it's there.
But it's there.
It's a deterrent.
Mm-hmm.
Now that you just announce, it don't work.
And we, when we looked at the building, the parking lot over here, we would have to put two cameras to be able to cover the whole parking lot here.
I remember them talking about that, they couldn't get the entire parking lot on one camera.
Um, I know, so it'd have to be an additional appropriation, Nikki?
Yes.
'Cause I think-
Yes.
Okay. Well, Dave, so you don't, you don't, you're waiting for the quote?
Yes.
Okay. So, then when we get the quote, I guess we'll go, we'll go from there, depending on the amount. I don't think we have to, uh, we'll wait till you get the quote, we'll go from there.
Mr. Mayor?
Does that sound right, as counsel, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I had talked with the chief about, about the cameras, and, and, uh, you know, when we put out bids for anything for streets or whatever, uh, it's nice to have, uh, uh, three bids at least. Uh, I don't know if you think that's, you know, would be the way to go.
That's fine.
But, uh-
I don't, I don't think we're required at twenty-five thousand, what's the, what, isn't it?
Not sure, I think it's higher than that.
Yeah, I thought it was thirty-five. But, but getting competitive, that's fine.
You, you want me to get another bid?
I think that's-
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah?
I think at three bids, you know, you should be able to get a pretty good idea.
And we'll look at the amount and make sure we'll-
Yeah, that way we can, you know, look at the amounts, hopefully, there.
Yep.
Chief, you have a second bid coming in already?
Yes.
Okay.
He, he told me it was gonna be here Friday.
Okay.
This coming Friday.
So, he, Chief did have a bid, he had, the first bid he had was for twenty-four nine. For everything, but I don't know if that's going to change with the evidence locker camera out now.
Didn't you say you're probably gonna have to add to that?
Um, yes, I might, I just might have to add, um, to that.
Any questions on the cameras? All right, Dave? Any other small items before we just briefly talk about dispatch?
Oh, it sorta has to do with that, um, law enforcement education fund and, um, also with some possible, additions that we're looking at adding to the fines and costs for court. So, right now, if somebody, um, needs a continuance before they've come to court for their traffic violation or their, their criminal case, if they request a continuance, we do grant that for them, and, um, it costs them ten dollars so that they can come back in two weeks, uh, maybe they needed that time to prepare, get a lawyer, whatever. So, we do charge them right now, I believe it is ten dollars. But then, when the defendants come up to the magistrate and they find out how much their fine is, they don't have the money at that time. And they ask for another continuance, and the magistrate is gracious, they do, uh, give them additional time to pay, but there is no penalty for that. And other communities do charge a fee for, um, giving them time to pay. Um, it's twenty-five dollars, um, twenty dollars. Um, that, that's something that we should probably look at. I do have some pamphlets here that I'd like to hand out to you. I believe it breaks down what our clerk of courts has been able to find out on those specific fines.
Chief, wh- while you're passing that out, Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, while you're passing that out, these people who are coming to court-
Thank you.
Who can't pay, or, you know, ask for a continuance because they can't pay the fine right away, uh, what types of crimes are these in generalities? We're not talking murders or anything like that.
No, tho- those are not heard.
What types of crimes are we talking about?
Right, those aren't heard in Walton Hills, um, traffic and misdemeanor, uh, um, criminal cases are heard. The majority of them are D U S cases.
What's a D U S?
Driving under suspension. Those fines are a little bit higher. You know, you, uh, speeding violation or a, um, you know, some type of moving violation might end up costing somebody two hundred dollars, depending on if they had a prior within the year or two, um, for a driving under suspension or, uh, uh, driving under influence of alcohol. You could be looking at three hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars. Mr. Mythello, if I'm incorrect?
So, you know, somebody was reading the law enforcement.
So, if, um, you know, they do need that time to pay, um, the magistrate does grant that for them to, to get the money. And there have been times where, you know, the, the magistrate will ask, well, how much time do you need? I can give you up to two court dates, which is actually a month, four weeks. And, um, they're, they're advised, if you can pay that off before the next court date that you're supposed to appear, then you don't have to appear in court again. But if you have not paid it at all, or you still have some money left on that bill, then you need to come back to court and ask for additional time. Otherwise, a warrant would be issued for your arrest. And that has happened, uh, on occasion as well.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, when you find out that these people, you know, they haven't put fifty dollars down on it yet.
Mm-hmm.
So, there are, let's see, that was for, Newburgh Heights has a late payment fee. So, that's what we'd be talking about. Um, these people need time to pay. Um, and Newburgh ends up charging, uh, the individuals a fee, a flat fee of twenty-five dollars.
Does the, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Does the magistrate or judge have the, in that, those communities you're talking about, do they have the ability to say, okay, you can't pay right now? Um, you can pay, you know, next, like you said, we'll, we'll give you some time? And then not impose that, uh, late fee? Do they have, do they have leeway? If, in other words, if the person is trying to pay? And, and I know you just mentioned they haven't put down fifty dollars on it yet, but if they're trying to pay, if they're putting money down, but they just can't, uh, make the deadline? And if they're, and if the magistrate does see that they're, 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 they are showing a concerted effort to pay their fine, do they have a leeway to say, okay, I'll give you more time, and I'm not gonna impose the, the, the fine on you? I could see telling somebody who doesn't give a, paying the fine, that, okay, well, now you're gonna get slapped with a little bit more. But if somebody's trying to, generally trying to pay, but they can't, or, you know, I would be willing to bet a lot of the people that show up here live paycheck to paycheck, you know, and I'm not, I'm not boo-hooing anybody, they broke the law, you know. But I, I think it's important that the magistrate have the leeway to take a case-by-case situation and make a determination based on that, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure that there are, uh, some cities out there, municipalities, that don't charge, like currently, right now, we don't charge. Uh, Parma is another municipality that charges a twenty-five dollar fee for time to pay, and they also charge a five dollar, uh, late fee.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I, I, I did not go and ask any other municipalities. The clerk of courts did this research on her own.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's just something that she believes that we should be enforcing.
Just, just off the top of my head, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, as I said, I, I would be in favor of this if the magistrate had the ability to take a case-by-case basis and make a determination if that person is trying to pay, you know, and, and, um, uh-
Waiver it.
Huh?
Like waiver it.
Yeah, wa- waive, waiver that, that additional fine for the time being and until that's paid. And if it's not, then, of course, the magistrate would have the leeway to put it on.
Well, if they, Mayor-
Go ahead.
If they, you know, if, what we, what I started was, hey, I would tell people what the fine would be and say, look, you can come back before the next court date, and you, like, the ma- the detectives, or the chief said he, you know, if you pay it before that court date, you know exactly what you're gonna owe. This would be, now, now, they gave them several continuances, at some point they get, you know, tired of continuing it for them, and they wanna resolve the case. So, if, once the case is resolved, then they're put on a payment plan. So, that this would, that fee would be instituted at the payment plan stage. So, the case would be resolved, so that the magistrate's done with the case at that point. If someone came back and asked for, you know, some consideration, if they filed something with the court, he can certainly, or he, she or she could certainly consider that and, and suspend some of the fine, which, you know, we have done in the past for unique, for people with unique circumstances, you know, that, that, uh, need a break, we, we have done that, suspended some of the fine, but, uh, but this fee would be imposed, uh, uh, for the payment plan, so. And a lot of communities do it, Bedford Court does it. Whether you guys wanna do it, that's up to you.
So, it's, it's a separate, it's a, it takes effect after, after the court?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just think, and I, I don't know if that clarified Mr. Spitznagle's, um, question or not, but I think if we were to take a look at this case-by-case basis, I think we might be opening up ourselves for a problem. Uh, especially if somebody finds out, well, you didn't charge them the late fee, but you're charging me, well, why are they so special? So, I think if we keep it straight across the board, um, I think we'd be better off.
Yeah, I would say don't call it a late fee, I would just, you know, I don't think it's proper to charge people for late fees, but I would charge, you know, a payment plan fee, which seems to be acceptable. But that's a one-time fee, though, I believe, you know, one time to get on a payment plan, and, uh-
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then especially with what Mr. Montello stated, that, um, did you say it was this month, Mr. Montello, that, uh, the state is changing the way that we can, uh, go after people, uh, to pay their fines and costs? Before, it was, we just went, and, listen, you're not paying your fines and costs, we're gonna suspend your driving privileges. And now the state's saying, you can't do that.
Is that part of what Suzanne's, uh, stated here, House Bill twenty-nine?
Yes, sir.
And that goes in effect April twenty-ninth?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, why don't we do a little more research on that and, uh, bring that back? It looks like we have to put a little more detail into that. Could, uh, that would be a legis- that would be, uh, legislation to, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on that?
Yeah?
Questions from anybody watching or listening?
No.
Our residents that are here? All right, is that last, Dave decides to dispatch?
That's it.
Okay.
Unless you would like to talk about the bringing over another-
Well, I'm just gonna briefly touch on that.
Okay.
Okay? Like, maybe, I talked about, 'cause counsel's aware of it, too. As you know, uh, you know, at times, um, other communities look to join other communities or ask to join us. We do our dispatching for ourselves right now. Okay? We could have opportunities to dispatch for one community, maybe two communities. But I think there needs to be some real discussion on that. Um, I know we talked, me and Dave have talked, uh, I think Jennifer has missed, talked to the chief about it, too. Depending on, uh, let's say, if it was two communities or one community, whether or not we would have to update dispatch, or could we do, uh, maybe one community with the present dispatch, uh, station we have? But I think, uh, it's something that needs some discussion. And I, when I mean say that, quite a bit of discussion. We were in a joint, uh, we did dispatch for another community before, we did it for a while. You know, there's just a lot there. But there is some opportunity for some revenue. But there is some, there might be some expenses to get to that, so that's, there's just, there's just, like I told Dave, uh, and I appreciate him as chief, you know, uh, always looking to better the department, make the community safer, uh, while at the same time, like all our directors, watching their budgets. But I just think this is one of those subjects. So, it's, it's up to counsel how you wanna go about it, uh, Councilman Allen. To me, I think you go to the safety insurance, start there, kind of get it together, maybe get a recommendation out of there, bring it to counsel, or however you choose, but, uh, certainly not a discussion for tonight, there's a lot, a lot there. Dave, as you know, has done, uh, quite a bit of research on it. So, but, uh, and, my thoughts on it, I, I, I think we should look at it. I'm just being a little conservative myself, but it's, it's a collective, uh, group of us to look at it is, um, I didn't know about spending the finances, you know, spending, just because of where we were at, and really just kinda moving forward and, and good and whether adding more employees, but maybe that, we need to take another look, maybe we need to really look at it and spend some time. What, what do you think, Jennifer?
That's fine, we can discuss it in a safety meeting.
Yes.
Um, because there are some things that eventually with our dispatcher are going to have to be upgraded.
Upgraded anyways.
Yeah, so it, it's something we're eventually gonna have to do. I will say, I am not a fan of area-wide dispatch centers. I will, I prefer our dispatchers that I can call, I know exactly who I'm talking to, they know exactly where seven four four seven McClellan is, and, you know, they know the city, and they care about our residents. There's been too many nightmares that I've heard of dispatch centers that are telling them to go to Maple Street. Well, there is no Maple Street in Walton Hills.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I, I am not at all. But our dispatch center is quite old, and it is going to have to be upgraded at some point, just the extent of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just very briefly?
Yeah.
If we were to bring back that other department, we would not have to make any improvements at this time. We could bring them back and we can start dispatching for them, okay? But it cannot happen tomorrow. They are in a contract with another police department. And in their contract, it states that they have to give six months' notice. So if we were to agree on this today, they're not coming over till October.
Right, and that's why we know there's, and I guess, that's why there needs to be discussion, because there's two issues there. Councilwoman Allen brought up whether or not and how soon, because it's been brought to us, about the upgrading of the dispatch, okay? And then you have this separate issue of dispatching for other communities. So there's, there's, there's just a lot there. But it's not a bad thing. I mean, besides the upgrade, I mean, but we can't complain. We, like all the stuff in the village, we take good care of it and we use it. And we get the, the longest life out of everything, it just speaks to the departments. So there's nothing wrong with that. You take care of something that lasts, and the village of Walton Hills is very good, good at that.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, do you know, and if not, could you find out if Lexapro knows anything about any grants for dispatch centers?
I could find out.
Okay.
That's a good one to discuss, if they come for the other.
Yes.
Does anybody have anything to add with that at this time, or any questions? So Jennifer, you're gonna have a meeting combining that. So let me just kind of sum this up. So I guess if you're gonna have safety insurance meeting, which you, I know you have one coming up here, I think, a scheduled one, you, you would have Lexapro, the cameras, I mean, we kind of went through it, but why not have it there, have it go through? And then court fines, two, I guess. And usually add everybody's committee, all the councils there. It's just gives us more of an opportunity to talk and bring it to the COW meeting. So I got Lexapro cameras, court fines, and then dispatch center contracting for other communities. Dave, do you have anything else you'd like to add at this time?
I think I brought enough.
Every time you come over, you see, you cost us money.
Mr. Mayor? I, I have a quick question for Dave. Dave, I, I know we sent, we sent an officer and he was trained in weights and measur- measures. I'm just wondering if you had been in contact with the Ohio State Highway Patrol? I know they were here once and it was, I know they asked, they, they said that they would like to come back again. I don't know if you've had any discussions with them?
So last year, we tried to get them back here. It was Sergeant Paulin that is taking that class. And I can't remember who the other officers were that worked with the State Highway Patrol when they came here a couple of years ago. But we did invite them last year and something happened on the State Highway Patrol's end where they couldn't come out. Now with the good weather coming up, it'll be a good idea for them to come back.
Well, this is, this is one of the reasons that, that I bring this up. I, I've just watched with semi trucks. There's a lot of people that, I don't know, I, they can't read the signs. They're getting CDLs. There's more and more accidents happening, happening on the road with semis. I had personal experience, man came down with the semi and the, you know, the road's closed going down the Valley View. He went around the sign and then got to the other signs where he couldn't go any further. He had to back the semi all the way up. He had, one of our, one of our guys, service department, just happened to be there with a truck and helped, helped him get back up the hill. He got out of the truck, came over, he couldn't speak English at all. He, so there's no way he read those signs. That's, and that's, that was the point that they were making in the clip that I saw. They can't read the signs to slow down when there's an accident or, or there's a, they have the service department working and they have a sign, slow down, there's roadwork ahead. They can't read the signs. And there's more and more accidents happening because they're figuring out ways to get these CDLs. Now, you know and I know, the CDL isn't easy to get, or it wasn't in the past, but it seems to be. So all I'm, all I'm asking is that maybe we have them back, you know, and the word gets out that this isn't just a truck lane, truck route running through here. We have four, five, six semis coming up the hill there on Alexander at one time. I mean, I'm, I'm looking right at them, I see it, so. But just, you know, just you get a chance to talk to them.
Yeah, I will talk to Sergeant Paulin and see if he can make the contact that he, that he has. And we will go ahead. They just can't come out, they have to be.
No, I understand.
Jeff, I've got no problem inviting them out.
Yeah, and like you say, with the nice weather coming, snow. Very good.
I know we did, yeah. Jeff, did you wanna come? You come up to the mic, I know.
Well, he's coming up, kudos to the dispatcher last night helping my daughter and I find the owner of a dog that jumped into my daughter's car coming up North Meadow Park last night.
What time was it?
About ten o'clock or so.
Would it probably have been Christina?
Yeah, she did a great job. The dog is safe, at home.
Mr. Mayor, who's dog, who's, who's dog was it? I saw the picture.
Oh, you know, I can't remember their name, but I, I can show you the house.
They're on North Meadow Park?
Yeah.
Okay, I know there.
Jeff Alexander, seventy-three twelve Walton. Chief, how many part-time officers do we have right now? Okay, so that's why you're talking about, usually they wanna move up, right?
Right.
Okay, that's one of the questions. Another thing is, are we gonna possibly take on a dispatch for a financial gain?
Yeah, that would be, that would be the reason.
Okay, and.
That would be the only reason.
Okay, and the, if you still use a cell phone, it does not come here first, right?
It goes to CECS.
Right, and you tell them and then they.
You tell them what community you're going through, or they may ask you, and then it should be routed through.
Is that gonna get changed forever, or?
Sometimes, depending on the location, a nine-one-one call from a cell phone will come into dispatch, okay? But I believe the majority of the time it goes right to the CECS, and then CECS has to transfer over to the next unit.
But I understand if it's a hard line, it comes right here.
If you're calling from your house and it's a hard line or business, then yes, it comes here.
And, another thing, I did a road tour with Sergeant Wallace a couple of years ago. And I thought she told me that the state gives the driver's license in eighty-four different languages. Does that sound, and I think that's part of the problem, like Fred was saying, with the, the CDLs and so forth, even regular driver's license.
I have heard that the driver's license, I don't know if it's worth the CDL, but driver's license, everything is done on the computer now, and I believe that you can't take it in your language.
Right.
And before, when all of us took that test, I don't know what the number was, did we have like a hundred questions? Did we have to score a seventy or seventy-five? Now, you don't even have to go through all a hundred questions. If, once you hit that pass mark, at seventy-five percent, your, your test is done.
Yeah, it's a big problem in the trucking industry.
I think he was talking to all of you, I'm lying, I mean it all, you guys, so I don't, I, I don't know what you were.
Bunch of horse and wagon.
My national registry didn't work like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you answer, Jeff, they, yeah, they, they actually made the test easier? And like you say, they, they, you don't even have to be there in person to take the test, so who's taking the test?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, for item six, which was police and dispatch discussion? Okay. Dave, you're welcome to stay. Lori, you're welcome, whatever you decide to do.
He's out of here.
Maybe we need some security. We can have a couple of snowbird residents.
Couple of ravelers.
You think so? I don't know.
It's like a rock rock.
You should have heard them coming in.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. So we have item seven, which we did talk about in our last COW meeting. That is Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten. That's the Walton Hills Lake Club Agreement for this year. It is staying the same, programs are the same, the whole lake club as far as their programs and their cost to the residents is staying the same. I don't know, if anybody were to have any questions, we could get it answered. I know Jeff, as a trustee, is here tonight, but I think it's pretty straightforward. Is everybody pretty much comfortable with it?
Yes.
For next week? Okay. And then Nick, and well, you talked to this a little bit, I know you and Rob talked. This is another one of our yearly resolution, resolutions. That's Resolution twenty-two-five dash twelve. That's the Ohio Department of Transportation contract for rock salt. That's the consortium we're in and stuff. Did you wanna talk a little bit about that? I know you touched base with Rob with that.
Yeah, the, just like you said, the only thing I, I don't have a lot to add, it's just authorizing participation in the salt program, there's no monetary amounts at this time. So it's something that we do every year.
Every year. And it's, the consortium, it's worked well for us. You know, so that would be on there next week too, if everybody's with that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
It looks like we would have to do that prior to May third, so that we can become part of the consortium, so I have no issue with that being under emergency.
Yeah, I would ask for suspension on both of those items, if everybody's with that. And then it will depend, the only other thing would be depending. Yeah, what it, what it takes to get that together. We wanna get it together right, you know, so, and that's for the dispatch. So that would be the only, at, at this time, piece of legislation that we would have, post-lead. Any questions on those two then, or we're good with those? Okay, very good. Any questions from the residents or anybody walking?
Uh, no.
Are you still watching rank?
It's about a thirty-second away.
But if you're not feeling good, I could, I can understand that too, so. Anybody have anything for other business?
Do you want me to talk something about? No, about that grant.
Oh, yeah, you can share that, go ahead.
There's a, which Councilwoman Canzoni brought up a grant that Nicole had sent her, thank you, that's her, that is actually due on the eleventh of this month, which is in a few days from now, of course. It is for a handicapped accessible van. It would be an eighty-twenty grant. At first.
When you say eighty-twenty, they pay eighty, we pay twenty, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The grant amount that I put in there was ninety-five thousand dollars. The, the van itself is almost fifty and it's almost forty-five thousand dollars, depending on what you put in it, to get it accessible. We have to go for the accessible van and not just a regular van. At first, I was just going for a regular van. At, at first, I was gonna put in for the bus, for, because our lift chair does not work on the bus. And Mr. Calbin, Calman said that it would be more useful for us to get a van. It's used a lot more. So I wrote the thing for a van and then I found out later on down the road, you had to do all this online, it was, you couldn't print it up and fill it up. That fifty percent, if, if you want just a vehicle with not accessibility, fifty percent of your fleet has to be accessible. Well, it blew us out of the water, so I had to change that. Long story short, it's, it's pretty much done. We have, we have to get some items. The mayor has to sign one page of it before the eleventh and, and turn it in. And then there is a lady there that we can turn in some of the, the other stuff that we need to turn in. We do have one route, that's an RTA route, that goes down Northfield Road and stops at a couple of different places. And they wanted to know if we had a, a public route, which obviously we, we have to answer yes to. But it's not accessible to our residents, you know, there's no walking to it. So we have to get a letter from them stating that it's, it's really a, basically, I'm paraphrasing, it's, it's no use to our residents, really, that, that need that type of service, whether they're seniors or handicapped. There's a couple of other things we have to do. We have to have a resolution, and there's a sample resolution that I emailed to Mr. Montello that we can put, if the mayor would put on for next week. Basically accepting, it's standard stuff, accepting the grant. We have to have a public meeting on it and we have to advertise it two weeks prior to the public meeting. So some things need to be done by May first and, and the application itself. Without all of the information, has to be in on the eleventh, so. It is what it is, it's, we'll, we'll get the rest of the information in and hopefully we'll get it. But I don't know, so that's where it stands right now.
Okay, Councilman Spitznagle, so I know you were, we talked and you were getting the timeframe. So we know we would have to, we gotta apply, get that in.
Right.
At the same, we gotta get that in by Friday.
Right.
Okay, or the end of the day, Friday.
Right.
But then the resolution, that doesn't have to go with the application?
It does not. There is a place for it to go with the application, but it says in there that if, due to the lateness of this coming out to begin with.
Right, it came out late, so this is.
They're giving us.
We received it, everybody received it late.
Right, they're giving time to get that in later. And, and there's a woman's email address, we can send that information to her.
Okay, so we're in good shape if we, we, we just have to accept it next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
Apply for it, which we have no problem with.
Correct.
And then we can have the public meeting in May then with two weeks' notice.
Right, right.
Okay, so we have time for that, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, I believe. So there's something else that has to be in by May first, but I think that's, I.
Even if we had to have a special meeting, I mean, we wanna apply for the grant, why wouldn't we, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We had talked about, we had talked about the van a couple of years ago. I remember I went and talked with the company and got prices and they're anywhere eighty-six to ninety-six, ninety-eight thousand dollars. That was, you know, that, that was like the price for the village. I mean, it was, I know they're expensive.
This would be a twenty-two-five Toyota Sienna. That would be maybe.
Fully accessible, yeah.
Yep, Brian, I really wanted to thank you for taking the lead on this. When I read through it, I was so excited that it was, wow, this is something that Walton Hills could apply for. And I have no idea, I'll be the first to admit, I don't know how to do a grant. And it is very.
Well, we'll see if I know.
A lot of involvement, a lot of paperwork, a lot of coordinating with all the different departments and the mayor.
I didn't do it myself, no, I didn't do it myself. Well, a lot of, I didn't do it myself, no, I didn't do it myself, everybody was involved in it, so I, you know.
I really want to thank you for taking the lead on it.
Ronnie, Ronnie from.
You're in Martin, too, Diane, you brought it to the table, too, so it's all collective group.
Yeah, exactly, and Ronnie from the rec department, she, she helped out gather some information. She was getting VIN numbers for the vehicles for me today and all that stuff, so, yeah, we all pitched him.
Let's hopefully, we'll have a chance.
We'll see what happens, keep our fingers crossed.
Hope so.
We'll apply, that's the, that's secret, we'll apply. Okay, so where are we at with it now, what do, I need to sign it?
Yeah, there's a page, you can sign it electronically, or you can print it and sign it, there's a, there's. The one page has to be signed and notarized, and then another page is just signed after, after the resolution is approved.
Okay, so the, the application, the, the grant application is complete, it just needs my signature, correct?
Just needs your signature, and it can go in, as, as is.
Okay, great. And we will get it in, John, will be able to, we'll get it notarized? Do we need to have the public hearing before we pass the legislation?
No, that's, that's, uh. Yeah.
No, I know, that, that's, I could just, yeah, so we're good. No, we need it by eleven.
Friday.
No, uh, you need to sign it by the eleventh.
And you need to notarize it, and we need to send it off.
By the eleventh, yeah, but the other stuff, we don't need by the eleventh.
No, the legislation, no.
The legislation we can do next week.
But we'd like to get it done in the, in the, you know, maybe the first or second meeting in May. You know, we can always attach a special meeting, I think it's worth it.
Can I see this? Here's one May first date, but I don't think it's anything that, that we're up against. Conduct a public hearing to consider the economic, social, environmental effects of the project, hold prior to May one. If more time is needed, notify this lady at her address. So we'll notify her that we need more time to hold the public meeting, because you have to give two weeks' notice, you have to put it in a paper, and you have to give two weeks' notice.
Okay.
And there's not two weeks left in the month, really.
No, we'd have to ask for, third week in May.
Yeah.
Maybe pass it in our, our regular council meeting in May, we'll contact them.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, yeah.
We'll, we'll contact.
It would be nice to contact her anyways, and say, we're, we're submitting it.
We're going to do that.
But we have, you know, we have this further information we need to get to, just so she knows and is aware of it.
Yep.
Yeah.
We can do that. We might even do it through email at L.A. Or.
Yeah, have a, have a record of it, see if we can.
Is that in the works?
That's her. Uh, no, that's not in the works yet, we have to contact RTA, and they, they're probably aware of these types of letters.
That's okay, I have a contact, yeah. Yep, I have a contact.
Oh, cool. We have all kinds of contacts.
Well, there's mayors that sit on the floor, so. Why you need the mayors.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Council President Whedon gives a thumbs up that he's still with us.
All right.
All right, didn't take his night call yet.
Okay, anybody else for other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I remember we went through a couple of years ago about solar panels with George Smarigan and stuff. And it's my understanding that it is not on the books. Is it possible to have George look over that stuff again, to see if there needs to be anything adjusted with that? And then we can pass that legislation?
Yeah, we can talk to George.
Because we went through all of that.
We, we passed it.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
We passed it, maybe it's, it's just not on the, at the.
They just have an update, but I thought we did do some, but let me, let's find out.
I have those records, I can.
Yeah, well, because somebody had called and asked about anything that was on the books about, and there's nothing out there.
Who did they talk to?
Jeff Verges.
Mr. Whedon worked on that with, and me, and Kevin, yeah.
Yeah, we can find out. Solar panels, not a problem.
I do remember a discussion you guys had a few years ago about it, because it, there were certain stipulations on where you would put it, in your yard, in your house, and.
Yeah, I thought the only thing, I thought we did put legislation, but we'll look into it. In place on a placement level. You couldn't limit thing, but you could maybe do something, but let's look at that, I could, yeah, I'll find, I'll find that out.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else with any other business?
I, I just, I couldn't understand what your question was.
We discussed a few years ago about solar panels, where they could be placed, things like that, but apparently it appears that we have not passed that legislation. So, I mean, we went through all the trouble of doing it, if the legislation wasn't passed, we need to pass it and make sure that it's updated, you know, from when we initially were looking at that.
Anybody else have anything for other business? Any residents have anything for other business, non-residents? Okay, well, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment, the COW meeting of April eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Nielsen, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for votes to adjourn at midnight fifty-six P.M. Thank you, everybody.